Well, good afternoon and welcome everyone back and thanks for our guests coming. As I mentioned a moment ago, we'll change our agenda a bit to accommodate our guests so that we would hear from them who are visiting to make public comment right away. And then we'll go back to kind of our regular agenda, which you're all welcome to stay for also. With that in mind, I'm going to ask Mertz to start that process.
Okay, I've got several public participation forums. You will all have three minutes to address the board. When I call your name, you can proceed to the end of the table. And if you have handouts, if you give them to, I think, Michigan Teacher of the Year, Gary Abud, would be happy to just take them and distribute them around the table. And I just want to remind you that the board does not engage in a conversation at the table, but are happy to hear what you've come up with. Okay, the first speaker is Tracy Peters and next up will be Karen Harper Royal. Tracy, if you'd come to the table.
Yes. Is this correct?
Yes.
Three minutes.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Tracy Peters. I'm a Detroit resident practicing attorney and still hold my professional teaching license from the state of Michigan. I'm not here to comment on the law, but I like to say that I'm an attorney for disclosure purposes. In fact, my comments probably speak more to my tenure working in Michigan for 16 years and my comments on the EAA versus what I'm kind of used to as a teacher. Superintendent Flanagan, I'm here to ask for your support and your efforts to withdraw and stop the expansion of the EAA. That's my wish. And to do what you can to restore the 15 schools to the Detroit Public Schools. State Board of Ed members, I'm here to ask for your support in supporting the superintendent to take this action for the following three reasons. Your endorsement seems to ignore the data that's been presented, I would say since about June of 2012, just on, for me as a teacher, what's most troubling is the baseline conditions that were presented by Dr. Todd Prodrone of Wayne State. Just from my perspective as giving assessments, a marked increase that originally was given under baseline conditions where there was a lot of equipment not working and chaotic. It seems difficult to measure that. Number two, the EAA is a statewide, state-of-Michigan district. It's not founded on a lack of transparency, but that's a huge component. Not here to argue PA 436, but I feel that when we in Detroit, and when I say "we," I say "we" and some of my parent neighbors, very confused about looking at the top-to-bottom list and the eventual schools that went in. I know that Roy Roberts had discretion to make that decision. I absolutely know that. I would just hope that as a public body, this board could do, I don't know, somehow entertain a conversation with the governor. Can we revisit that? Can we have more transparency if you decide to expand and enter more schools? My last point speaks to the materials used. I have been in three of the high schools and done, for lack of a better operative verb, buzz. And I, you know, I was a fourth grade teacher here and I watched the successive finesse by the MDA or MDE with the ELA grade four prep materials. They're awesome. You know, MEEP test is high-stake stuff. Your name is on that. Your name is also on what we're putting through in the EAA and it stands for our whole state. And I'm very concerned that the educational materials they're delivering, apart from state curriculum, it's just not, it's not up to par what I'm used to seeing as the state of Michigan's educational materials. For these reasons, I'm respectfully requesting that you reconsider expansion and restore the 15 schools to the Detroit Public Schools.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Harper Royal and following her will be Mayu Vang.
Is it possible for Majwa to go before me?
Yeah, I can just go before her.
Yes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Majwa Vang and I speak as a citizen resident of Dearborn, Michigan. I actually am here today because I am submitting three-minute testimony from someone, Dr. Mercedes Snyder of New Orleans, and she's a quant methods professor, psychometrician, and she can't make it today, so here's her video testimony.
My name is Mercedes Schneider. I'm a Louisiana public school teacher and I have been asked to give testimony at this December 17, 2013, Michigan State Board of Education meeting. Superintendent Flanagan and members of the board, thank you for hearing my testimony. I'd like to talk to you in these five minutes about RSD, the Recovery School District in Louisiana. It has been promoted as a national miracle. It is not a national miracle. Like most models, this model has been airbrushed and I'd like to let you know a little bit about how that works. First off, RSD was started for Katrina in 2003. The score for schools to be put in RSD was set at 60. And at that level, I know you don't know the meaning of that score, but it didn't yield as many schools in the state recovery school district as those who wanted to start a charter district desired. After Hurricane Katrina, the legislature passed a bill that raised that score, so any school below average could be put in that district. And that could upwards of 100 schools in the district. It did not put all of the Orleans Parish schools. The Louisiana constitution would not allow for the dissolving of the district, even though that's what was desired. So in Orleans Parish, there are actually two districts. There's the Orleans Parish School District, which is consists of about 17 schools. And then there is the state-run Recovery School District, RSD, which is similar to what I think you guys called an achievement district. And that's around 100 schools, roughly. Not all of them are receiving scores right now, which is out of reach, so it's hard for me to say exactly how many schools. It's a lot of schools. The district itself is above 83 percent charter. The state decided a few years ago to give letter grades to schools. We had had school performance scores. Four years before that, of course, they did not get the public attention that letter grades get. And the letter grades are a game. I need to tell you that here's how the game works. The letter grades always stay the same, A, B, C, D, F. But what changes behind the letter grades, there's three things that can be manipulated. One, the tests used to yield the letter grades, the tests and measures. Two, the formula for calculating the letter grades. And three, the grading scale. In this last year, this last set of school performance scores, the way that that has been manipulated to make RSD look like it's moving forward is that schools that were not achieving, their students could earn bonus points, but only if they underachieved. And once they, once the student received a basic on the state exam, the bonus points disappeared. Now, the beauty here is that RSD has never done well with letter grades. It's been predominantly a D and F district by the state's own letter grade formula. And so that's a really hard sell to say that the eight-year-old, it's been eight years since Hurricane Katrina, the eight-year-old Recovery School District is a miracle because it's mostly Ds and Fs. And so the bonus points has bumped up the grades some, some Ds to Cs. So now schools are saying, oh, we're Cs schools. Isn't that great? It's not so great because when RSD was created, the big call was for improvement, a great improvement. The state would take over and greatly improve, which they have never done. But the rules have changed. One thing that is true of the charters in New Orleans is that some of them are selective admissions charters. Those get mixed in with the others. We also have a call for open enrollment now and Orleans Parish schools, a handful of the schools that were not getting open have chosen to participate in open enrollment. But those schools still affect. Now, I have on the board behind me my blog. You should go to my blog and read about the articles under RSDs. Really too much for me to talk about here. One of the chaotic pieces is something called the ONE App, the Parental Application, for applying for RSD schools. I walk people through that ONE App. It's a chaotic process. You will notice if you look at the ONE App that many of the schools are still rated D and Fs, so parents are given the choice to move their kids mostly to D and F schools. You will notice how complicated the ONE App is and there are errors on the application, so that is no solution. RSD was designed to be really underregulated. The Charter Audit 2012 shows that John White either refuses to give and cite visits. I know I'm out of time. Thank you for your time.
John White is the superintendent of public instruction in Louisiana and he will not visit the charter schools because of budget cuts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our seated at the table is Karen Harper Royal. She will be followed by Victor Gibson.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak before you today. I am a public school parent in New Orleans. I also work with public school parents in New Orleans. Most of the parents I work with, their children have disabilities and I help them navigate through the public school system. I have two sons who have gone through the public school system. My second son is now a senior at a charter school in New Orleans and he's been at the same school since before it was a charter. So over the last 21 years, I've had a chance to see our school system change drastically. As a student myself, I and my siblings went through the school system. It worked well for me and my sister, not so much for our brothers. And our brothers continue to struggle. So when my first son attended school in New Orleans 21 years ago, I ended up quitting my job when he was in kindergarten because school wasn't working for him and I did not want to see a pattern repeat in our family. Over these years, I have seen so many changes that were designed to help children, just like my brothers, but in the last eight years since Hurricane Katrina, the Recovery School District, which was similar to your EAA, really has trapped children in a failing school system. I see this with the parents that I work with who are desperately trying to get their children out of the Recovery School District. Some of the problems, especially those children with disabilities, are facing is that they have become a liability to a school district where competition for students is so important. And I'm going to lead with you this Access Denied booklet, which the Southern Poverty Law Center presented a report on how some of the children in our city are being shuffled around and not really served with little state oversight. If you're going to have an EAA, oversight is paramount. But what we see is that because there is a state interest in perpetuating chartering of schools, there's really no incentive to make the schools in the Recovery School District successful because an unsuccessful school becomes justification for handing it over to a charter operator. There are some charters that seem to operate fine, some that don't. But many of them depend on certain types of students. So you, and as Dr. Schneider said, you can't really trust the data coming out of Louisiana because it's been manipulated in so many ways. Parents are facing schools that are closing and their kids are moved to other schools in the Recovery School District, only to find that that school is going to be closed a year or two later. If you're into creating an EAA so that you can help the most challenged children understand following the New Orleans model will not get you there. Don't let it take eight years, like we are seeing in New Orleans, to see that you followed a failed model. The very first school that was placed into the Recovery School District in 2003 was Capto Charter School. Today, Capto Charter School, 10 years later, is an F-rated school. Sorry, my time's up. I could tell you so much more, but I will leave this document with you. And if anybody, I left my contact information on the card. I would be happy to share more information with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Our next speaker is Victor Gibson, followed by Helen Moore.
Good morning to everyone.
Good morning.
Briefly, my name is Victor Gibson. I'm being affectionately called Baba Gibson at my school, Malcolm X Academy, which I just recently retired. I am 23 years in the system of teaching African-centeredly cultural to our children, and that's what I wish to come and address to you today. We know that in '99, what happened to Detroit schools was something like a deliberate takeover and setback for African-Americans. And in the spirit of Nelson Mandela, and we will call it apartheid in Detroit, what we'll call it, you have basically created a system whereby we cannot finish the job that we were started in 1990. Now, historically, I am the Teacher of the Year for Michigan in Detroit Public Schools. I was given that honor in 2011, 2012. And the reason I kind of left the school system is because of what you all have, what has happened to Detroit Public Schools, in that we had a solution for the school-to-jail pipeline, as we call it now, and we had a solution for it, and the solution was very effective. We were on our way to correcting half the cultural problems that are facing African-Americans in this country, not just in Detroit, because we were a model for school districts all over America. And since that time, we've come back and we've set African-American achievement culturally-wise, not just academically, but culturally-wise, back, as Governor English said back when he took over the schools, 50 years, he was going to take Detroit's public schools back. And in 50 years from 1999, that will leave you about 1950s. And in those 1950s, we've seen what has happened to a people who have been decidedly cut out of the curriculum. We're not talking about the schools, the EAA schools in which you all set up. We're talking about the curriculum that goes into that teaching. If you're not going to educate a people back to their right minds, then what are you going to end up having is a group of people that's going to be permanently subculture or subsitizens of the overall mainstream. And these are things we need to kind of look at. Martin Luther King said it best, "When you place people in darkness, you will get the darkness." And those of you who were able to remember the 1960s and the riots and the foolishness and the anger that our people portrayed because they thought they were not being heard, that they were not being given a fair chance, you are subject to see that again. I don't want to be a Messiah. That is not my purpose. But I'm here to warn each and every one of you. If America's going to be great, truly great, then all its citizens must have their right minds, not just the Asians, not just the Hispanics, not just the Euros, not just the Italians, but especially the African-Americans, based on the fact that we were the ones who were, who much was taken from and very little has been allowed to get back. So I ask you to reconsider not just the curriculum, not just the schools, but the curriculum in which we are educating a particular race of people. And that will be my last two minutes.
Excellent.
Thank you. Helen Moore, please, followed by Tony Baker. Good afternoon.
The last time I was here was the Oakman Orthopedic School. I think you all will remember. I represent a coalition, keep the vote, no takeover coalition, 24 different groups, including the Black Parents for Quality Education and the Detroit Public School Education Task Force. So I'm here today not just to talk about our children and what's happened to them, but I want to talk about injustice. We are talking much of the time about the EAA. And many times, good people who really want the best for children are sometimes either afraid to do the right thing or just don't have it in them to do the right thing. The right thing for us in the city of Detroit, since we are the only ones that are affected by this EAA that is failing, and we have the documentation, we're saying to you, don't continue this experiment. It is killing our children. They are unhappy and some of the parents were told that they must go to these schools. And once we found that out and met with parents in the churches, in the schools, we found out that they received a letter that said, "You've got to go to this school we've assigned." This is not slavery. Our children are not slaves. We know that we have choices, and I hear a lot of you talking about choices. When we found that out and when we addressed the parents, they say, "We didn't know we couldn't go to those schools." And so they begin to leave. And they're leaving engrossed and they're going to leave even more. Now, I came here to save you all. I'm not Jesus Christ, but you all have children in school systems that are not in Detroit Public Schools. And Mr. Flanagan, you're talking about extending this experiment. I want to tell you, don't do it. All you Republicans and people, I hope you're listening, you do not want to do to your children exactly what happened to Detroit Public Schools. When the shoe gets on the other foot and it happens to you, then all of a sudden, you're going to be later on down the way when children find out that they've been put into a failing school system. It will ruin them for the rest of their life. It is a label. Our children have been labeled enough being black. We're saying to you, don't allow this to happen to your children. Don't extend this program. In fact, Mr. Flanagan, write a letter to the children and the parents in Detroit Public Schools and tell them they are not slaves, that they do not have to go to the EAA schools. Give them a choice and tell the other people that are affected by this inhumane act, tell them, "Don't send your children," because the same thing that's happened to our children will happen to them. Case in point, children sitting in classrooms with these computers, looking at porno. How do I know? I was at the teaching from some of these children, from some of these teachers. Looking at porno, there is no safe gap with teachers that are facilitators and are not teaching. Our children deserve more than that. And I know my time is up and I'm just going to say to all of you, be brave. Mr. Flanagan, if you're not going to do for the children of Detroit, then you need to be fired. And these people around the table can fire. As far as I'm concerned, you have not done justice to our children. And I hope all of you think about it. Think about Nelson Mandela and all the good whites that said, "Back and allow that to happen to the blacks." This is what you're doing to our children in Detroit. Start thinking about it and do no harm. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tony Baker, followed by Elizabeth Larva.
Hello, my name is Tony Baker. I'm the Director of the Center for Latino Studies at Ferris State University. I'm also a Grand Rapids Public School Board member, so I really appreciate the deliberation and thoughtfulness you have in discussing issues here today. I'm here to discuss an issue of concern related to the recent changes in the professional readiness test and inform the board and Department of this concern. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the Department's support in raising the bar for teacher preparation. At Ferris, in an effort to create a broader classroom teacher pool, we have created a new partnership with Grand Rapids Public Schools to alleviate the cultural disparities between GRPS students and its teaching staff by creating a distinct teacher certification path for adult professionals such as parapros, childcare workers, and teacher aides. We currently are creating a cohort of approximately 20 seasoned professionals who have many dedicated years of teaching experience in supportive roles. Most persons in this cohort are African-American or Latino and bilingual adults. We believe that in order to meet the growing demand for bilingual teachers, that tapping into the current pool of dedicated school personnel will benefit children more quickly. These working professionals, mostly in elementary or special education, however, are often more distant from formal academic training in math and writing. Yet they are very skilled at many of the more difficult aspects of classroom teaching, such as classroom management or understanding the cultural backgrounds of the students. The new MTTC test requirements are creating a significantly increased barrier to the teaching profession for these adult recruits. Ferris did anticipate this need to prepare students to take the test. We created a 10-week workshop in the subjects of the test to begin this preparation. We began this last October. We're offering this free of charge to the students in order to get them past this significant hurdle towards acceptance into the School of Education. The results of the October test, though, have us leery about the ability to pair this cohort for the level academic rigor required for the test. Reports of current college students with above-average ACT scores who are flunking the test has created a level of concern for the students. We would sum our concerns below. The overall rigor of the test has perhaps raised the bar too high in general, especially in relationship to the type of testing involved and the actual career interests of our students. It may have an unintended consequence of limiting adult or returning students. It may also limit efforts to increase teaching force diversity, especially for potential non-native English-speaking personnel, which will be necessary for the growing number of ELL students in the state. If there are no changes to the test, and really this is just a request because I'm not expecting a change, I think that a lot of the work has gone into it, but we would encourage you to monitor the impact of this test on diverse populations, especially for returning adult students as they enter into alternative certification programs such as this new initiative at Ferris. We would not want to limit the contributions of these well-prepared prospective students. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Larva is next, followed by Al Chapel.
Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Larva. I've been a fourth-grade teacher for 39 years. I have a master's degree in elementary science curriculum from the University of Michigan. And in 2007, I was the recipient of the Presidential Award for Excellence in Science Teaching for the State of Michigan. I'm here to share about the next-generation science standards. And by trying to give you a brief snapshot of how NGSS might look different in a classroom from the current grade-level content expectations, or GLICs as we commonly call them. A current core idea in the GLICs for fourth graders is to learn about the Earth, Sun, and Moon. In my classroom, students would read, have hands-on experiences, watch videos, research, and write about the topic. The culminating activity would be for students to make a model showing the relationship of the Earth, Sun, Moon, and trying to demonstrate to me what they learned about revolution, orbit, day and night, et cetera. This is considered a science practice, communicating information and ideas. Now, let's look at the same core idea about Earth, Sun, Moon in NGSS. The difference is, the students are also asked to, quote, "engage in argument from evidence," unquote, which is one of the eight science and engineering practices. It's also one of the practices from the Common Core for mathematics and ELA, too. This means that after the students learn about the information and create their model, they would go a step further. They would sit down together, look closely at their models, and have a conversation. The NGSS document states that students should, quote, "respectfully provide and receive critiques from peers about a proposed model by citing relevant evidence and posing specific questions," unquote. Does the model communicate the intended information and ideas? Is the creator of the model able to cite evidence to support his or her ideas? Do parts of the model need to be changed or reworked? Then the model should be revisited because scientists and engineers want to, quote, "identify the best explanation for a natural phenomenon," unquote. By going through this process, students will have dealt with the information in a much deeper and more sophisticated manner. Changing the current standards will take a lot of time and effort, so I hope you will consider having a discussion about the next-generation science standards. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for your work.
I'm going to take privilege for a second because I know EAA folks are leaving, some who are interested in the topic, and I want to at least restate something I said this morning, which is that what we announced last week was that schools that were going to be named in our original plan in 2013 will not be. And that our concern was that we needed options beyond the EAA and hope those options will be in place in 2014. So what this was saying is, in spite of our previous announcement that we would put schools in by the end of this year, meaning this December, we postponed that and said, "We're not doing it until '14," and that's with the hope that the legislature will create other options beyond the EAA for us to make those assignments. Because what the Department does is you put it in the state reform district. And right now, we're not content with the only option being that when they're there, their only option is to go to the EAA. We believe there needs to be other options and we're working towards that end. But in essence, what happened was we postponed doing that this month until next year in order to be able to hopefully get other options for that. And only because I saw a few having to leave. I think they appreciate the person who took the trip all the way from New Orleans to come here and wanted her to hear that because she very much appreciated to hear that voice. And I know, well, I think you've made some excellent points with our own understanding of the reform district there, so thank you for bringing that back up.
Our next speaker is Al Chapel, followed by Hannah Miller.
My name is Allen Chapel, and I've been fortunate enough to have taught in the Midland Public Schools for the past 23 years. As a high school biology teacher, I'm highly supportive of the board adopting these world-class science standards known as the next-generation science standards that include climate science, and please do it right away. The NGSS, these are big improvements over the current standards. I actually spoke with my team leader at Midland High School, and we couldn't really put a finger on when we had changed over to the current standards. We thought it was eight to 10 years. So right now, those current standards are outdated. The example that I'm going to use is climate science. The evidence is what I teach my kids in school. The evidence is what I teach my kids in school. Follow the evidence. If you follow the evidence, you can find support or refusal for your concepts or ideas.
Michigan, and I was a K-12 science teacher in Michigan for a few years, and now I'm studying science education and educational psychology at Michigan State University. And I am encouraging the Board to adopt the next-generation science standards because of the interdisciplinary nature of the standards. They connect all scientific subjects together, so science departments, the teachers that are teaching science, can come together and create a curriculum that's very connected, and the knowledge will be very connected for the students. And so this connected knowledge would allow students to make informed scientific decisions, for instance, to mitigate climate change, or for many other important social implications of science. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Tim Fisher, please, followed by Paul Drummond.
Hello, Mr. Superintendent and the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this afternoon. My name is Tim Fisher, and I'm the Deputy Policy Director at the Michigan Environmental Council, and I'm also the father of four children, which is why I look so tired all the time. And I just wanted to speak with you a little bit about the next-generation science standards. We strongly support them and want my children and other children in Michigan to benefit from this, from these standards as soon as possible. What I have here is over signatures of over 6,000 parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, and science supporters. They've signed this petition calling on you to adopt these standards, and I'll start passing these right here. There are names and then comments on some of those, and I think the comments are summarized in the back if you are interested. I understand that you also received an electronic copy of these by email on December 3. Just to give you a couple examples of some of the comments contained in there. Anne Shoup from Empire Michigan wrote, "Please adopt the next-generation science standards without delay. An understanding of climate science will be critically important to our children's futures." Thank you. James Livingston from Scandia wrote, "As a university professor in the state, I must emphasize the importance of adopting these standards and training the coming generations of scientists educated and working in Michigan." So just to close, it's important to me that my children learn the truth about their world, including climate change, which will have a huge impact on their lives. The inclusion of solid climate science for all students in the standard is one example of how these standards are better than what we have today and why they should be adopted right away. Further delay in adopting these standards is a disservice to my children and all of Michigan's children. States like Kansas and Kentucky have already adopted them, and let's not fall further behind. Thank you for taking, you know, letting me address you today and taking these petition signatures in support of the next-generation science standards.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paul Drummond, followed by Robbie Kramer.
Thank you for letting me present to you today, Mr. Superintendent, President Austin, and august members of the Board of Ed. Today I am here on behalf of the Square One Education Network. The Square One Education Network provides funding to schools and other K-12 environments, enabling them to provide innovative, meaningful STEM programs. We provide funding to teachers and schools that are succeeding against all odds. I'm also with the Macomb Intermediate School District as a professional developer. I develop courses that are developed, presented to teachers within Macomb County, as well as Wayne and Oakland County. I also serve on the Innovations and Program Committee for the Communication, Community Telecommunications Network and the Ann Arbor Hands-on Museum as a science education consultant for them. The Square One Board represents education as well as industrial leaders from Chrysler, Ford, Eaton Corporation, Ingersoll Rand, Intel, and Infosys. We also have advisory members from CIMA and from Southwest Airlines. Our Board supports fully the adoption of the next-generation science standards. Any teacher or school that has received funding from us as a Square One Education Network and previously from the Convergence Education Foundation received it because they were in line with what next-generation science standards represents. The science and engineering practices and design practices, the content that's embodied there, is all in line with what our industrial leaders tell us we need to do. I strongly urge you, Square One strongly urges you, to move forward and adopt the next-generation science standards because we believe that when you have an engineering and job fair where there's 3,000 jobs and only 200 engineers show up to apply for those jobs is a problem. It's a problem for us educationally, and it's a problem for us economically. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robbie Kramer is our next speaker, followed by Sarah Stapleton.
Once upon a time, a very long time ago, Robbie Kramer entered a classroom as an elementary teacher. And to be honest with you, it was 41 years ago, and I can't believe it myself, but it's true. Teaching elementary and middle school has been my life. It has been my passion, working with children, teaching them how to learn to read, to write, how to do science, conduct investigations, and to talk about what they're learning has been everything to me and the best part, it still is. I'm also a science leader. I'm really here today on behalf of the Michigan Science Teachers Association. I am their executive director, but I'll be very honest with you, when I leave here, I go back to a school district where I'm helping chemistry teachers to look at their chemistry practice as they begin using some of these practices that are part of the next-generation science standards. MSTAs have been an active part of the internal reviews. We have tried to develop conference programs that have lots of professional development for teachers to help them begin to understand what these standards are all about. And I bring to you a gift today from the Michigan Science Teachers Association, and it's, they're Honeycrisp apples, and they're already washed. My husband washed them last night before I brought them. But the true reason for this is really not the apple, although I hope you enjoy it, but it's the ribbon that is on the package. This ribbon has three different strands. Each strand represents one of the dimensions of the next science teacher, of the next science teachers, of the next generation's science standards. And so what we know is that these standards, every performance expectation is woven together with the engineering and science practices, the cross-cutting concept, and the core disciplinary idea. And these three pieces are in every single performance expectation, be it a kindergarten level, be it a chemistry high school, be it one of the performance expectations for middle school. And so the kids are doing science. They are beginning to use those practices of asking questions, answering questions, thinking about it around content, that core disciplinary idea, and the cross-cutting concepts, the big themes, structure, function. So weave them together. Remember, the next gen is based on research of how best to learn in this day and age, and enjoy your apple. We look forward to talking about these things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Stapleton, followed by Tom Pedroni.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for having us talk. My name is Sarah Stapleton. I'm currently a PhD student at Michigan State of Canada, actually, in science education, curriculum instruction, and teacher education. I'm a former science teacher. I've taught physical science, general science, chemistry, high school chemistry, and AP environmental science. And I am here to support the next-generation science standards. As you know, probably the PISA results from 2012 just came out, and United States does not look good in science, actually in anything, but we're 24th now in the world, which is pretty abysmal. And one of the things that we know from comparative ed research, and I've spent a lot of time living overseas, so I think a lot about international issues, and I was a Peace Corps volunteer, is that the countries that have it, they've figured out education and science is that they cover fewer things in a lot more depth. And what we find is that if students can really understand deeply, they can understand across many contexts. But if we do a superficial spread of too many things, we just don't get much learning and much at all. And this really, really fits with all the things that we know about learning through the learning science research. And so basically, NGSS has done a really nice job of really narrowing down the plethora of standards that used to be there, so that there are far fewer, they loop over the years, and it's really promising and helps us get on sort of the same level as a lot of our international colleagues and countries. And one thing I will say here, too, is that I've worked with elementary science teachers this year, teaching our pre-service candidates, and NGSS has been really helpful for them. It's been a way that they can see how practice is incorporated into content, and it's really led to some amazing lessons that they've written, and so I think it's really promising for what it can do for our teachers K through 12. More specifically, I'm a big advocate of climate change being taught in schools. As an environmental science teacher, it was shocking to me that there was a huge stratification in how much students understand about climate change based on the families that they come from. Our students from high-income backgrounds often know a lot about this, and our students from low-income backgrounds often haven't heard anything about it. It's a huge source of inequity in terms of what we teach about in science, and it's also a huge global justice issue that we need to know about. The fact that the climate change debate that is in this country is only in this country, there's no other country in the world that is questioning whether climate change is actually real, is something really alarming to me. And it's embarrassing as an American citizen that when I go overseas, people have to say, "Why in the world does your country not understand that climate change is upon us?" And that we're huge contributors, and the fact that students really need to understand this. I've been doing research on kids who went to Bangladesh to study climate change, and it was phenomenally important to them and has changed the way they think about the world, their life, their actions, and their responsibility. So, please, please.
Thank you.
It's a fight, but it's really worth it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, our final speaker, unless someone else has a form, is Tom Pedroni.
Thank you so much. My name's Tom Pedroni. I am an Associate Professor of Curriculum Studies at Wayne State University. I have yet to catch up on the news of what was talked about this morning and possibly at lunch as well, but my comments are going to be based on the assumption that there is still some possibility, although I understand that possibility is mitigated now, that given that the EA is the only entity that is available right now, that someone may be moving schools into that entity, possibly 10 or more, as early as next month, okay? Even if that is no longer the case, I still think my comments will be helpful to consider. Putting more schools in the EAA is premised on the assumption that the claims of student growth presented by, reported by Ms. Esselman must be correct, and that the parents who have used choice to leave EAA must basically have a preference to not have their children attend school during the summer months, for the most part. To me, this reflects a classic disposition of readily accepting information that validates one's viewpoint and dismissing information that seems to contradict it. Why should the claims of Ms. Esselman be doubted or treated with skepticism? The EAA first came forward with spectacular-sounding gains in February of last year. At the time, those of us who heard of the scores reacted with a mix of fascination, and because we are researchers, the desire to delve more deeply to validate the claims. As someone who has monitored educational developments in Detroit as a researcher for quite some time, I was eager to know more, but when I tried to get my hands on any information on the scores other than Ms. Esselman's pronouncement of the positive results, I learned this information was simply not available to us. I contacted each of the reporters who had reported the claims and asked if they had received any underlying data or simply just the pronouncements of Ms. Esselman. It turned out that none of them had received any information other than her pronouncement of the results. I then asked Ms. Esselman directly for the information numerous times. She simply didn't return my calls. I then filed a Freedom of Information Act request and waited for more than the legally permissible time for the information. Finally, I received documents for which I had to pay several hundred dollars out of my family's personal finances. If the information I received in response had simply validated Ms. Esselman's claims, then my conclusion would have been that the growth was indeed real and that the EAA had just been too busy to get the information out or respond to my request. But that's not what I found at all. Instead, I found that there were very good reasons for Ms. Esselman not wanting to share the information with me. What I learned from the FOIA materials that I received confirmed anecdotal stories that I and others had heard from teachers at the schools about conditions surrounding the baseline test. Remember, the results of the baseline test are what every claim of growth made since then is measured against. What Ms. Esselman hadn't shared with us was that 15% of students in second grade to 11th grade took the wrong reading test, a test meant for kindergartners and first graders. She didn't want us to know that the wireless infrastructure was simply not ready for the test, that students couldn't connect, that logins didn't work, that when they did work, students were booted out of the system, the headphones needed for the test were not available. The list goes on. Now, we can have sympathy for teachers and administrators in a new educational system that experiences that kind of difficulty at its launch. I'll just finish up quickly. However, while we can have a sympathy for those conditions, that doesn't mean we should accept the validity of that baseline. We all know from our own time in school that to have a valid comparison of a baseline to later achievement, we need to have constant conditions. Those conditions didn't exist in the initial test. Students experienced massive frustration with the test, and apparently, many found it difficult to take the test too seriously, given all the glitches that need to be worked out. Many took the wrong test. While that lack of validity of the baseline comparison is of concern, and therefore also subsequent claims made about growth relative to that baseline, what is more concerning to me and what should be more concerning to you is the issue of trustworthiness that underlies what I just described. I have been referring to Mary Esselman as Ms. Esselman, but she's actually Dr. Esselman. She knows very well the need for consistency in testing conditions to make valid comparisons, but she also has a strong interest in making the EAA sound like a success. A lot is riding on the success or the appearance of that success. Many relationships she has in the state are premised on it. Her job and Dr. Covington's job are premised on the delivery of results. No one can argue that. With her doctorate, Dr. Esselman chose to not make the information I was eventually able to obtain readily available to the public because she understood the implications as well. Why do we conduct a full audit of the EAA's finances and not the processes by which it makes claims that would lead Mr. Flanagan or anyone else to be willing to put 10 or more schools into the district? Don't the children and their families in the affected school districts deserve such an audit? Even Scantron, the maker of the assessment, cast doubt on the claims that the EAA has made. Since then, the EAA has made even more spectacular claims of growth, but my family frankly is not in a financial position to pay for the Freedom of Information Act request to check on this. Perhaps you, Mr. Flanagan, will agree that it's not my family's responsibility to conduct this audit of the EAA before you decide or anyone decides to put more schools into it. While Dr. Esselman's claims are imprudently taken at face value, the mass action of parents leaving the EAA is readily dismissed by many or explained away as related to the desire to not have their children in school during the summer months. Anyone who has any faith in parents to make the best choices for their children would say that the parent should at least be consulted about why they left by the thousands after only one year. Why is this not seen as important data worth further investigation? If the massive gains that the EAA reports are true, and certainly the public has been made aware of these growth claims, then we would expect people to be moving from Detroit's other failing schools to the EAA en masse, but they don't do it. Could it be that families in Detroit, those with kids in the EAA or in other schools, have been paying attention to data that you are not hearing? Perhaps they have been paying attention to reports of extremely unruly conditions at the schools that result in the explosion of disciplinary incidents, and then the suppression, according to many teachers, of further reporting of those incidents. Can it be that those parents have been hearing the stories of massive teacher turnover, of teacher inexperience, of equipment not working, of materials not being loaded into the computer platform as they were promised, of children having no safeguards placed on their laptops that would prevent them from accessing YouTube, Facebook, and even pornography as reported in one fourth-grade classroom? Obviously, the lack of a block can be addressed and likely has. Obviously, the lack of a block can be addressed, and likely has been addressed by now in many circumstances. But what does it communicate to parents of children in EA schools that those blocks were not there for most of the first school year? You cannot, in good faith, no one can in good faith, add any more schools to the EA before an audit is done, an audit of the concerns of parents who left the schools en masse, and until we audit the growth claims as thoroughly as the finances of the EA are now being audited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Helpful insights, and again, I wasn't sure if you were here a little earlier, Professor, but the reason we're not putting them in this month, and have postponed that, is because I, too, am not comfortable with that only option, and we're looking for other options. I'm, I'll leave it at that. I mean, we have public school teachers there that I think are doing their best. There are questions, perhaps, about the system itself. But it's for that very reason that we want to be sure, and I hope, we were thinking the legislature would give us other options by the end of the year. They did not. So we are hoping for that in the new year, but understand a lot of the points that have been made here. Probably should have, we realized a little while ago, we probably should have used a different headline last week, because we thought what we were getting across was we're postponing it and not doing it in December, because that's what we kept saying all year we were going to do. So by announcing that we were going to do it next year, we missed the main soundbite, I guess, which is, "We're not doing it this year."
January.
Well, the press release didn't say that, but I understand your point, and thanks for everyone taking the time to be here. And the science folks, you know, I could tell, there's like an aura above the smarts in the room with the science, and the professors and the EA folks who mean best for our kids in the state. So thanks for everyone taking the time to be with us today. And you're welcome to stay, there's more fun coming. In fact, right away, we're bringing Vanessa, Keisler, and Linda Ford to the front on a presentation on Michigan Student Data Project. Yeah, you know, thank you, thank for that reminder. We've had new employees sitting with us quite a while, and you're welcome to stay the rest of the night. But why don't we start with, I think, Joseph, are you the first one?
Wasn't that a wonderful decision.
I have a limited number of deputies, and I guess the only one that doesn't have a new one. So Vanessa.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We are thrilled to have two new employees in the Department of Education Services. That would be the Division of Education Services, not the department. I'd like to announce Luanna Haborca, who has joined our Office of Career and Technical Education as a fiscal specialist, I think. Leo, would you like to just briefly say hello to the board and your new staff?
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Luanna Haborca. I work with Patty Cantu in the Office of Career and Education, oh, no, Technical Education, excuse me. Sorry. What I do there is, I'm the fiscal specialist for that particular office, as well as, and going to be learning and be the expertise on Perkins funding that the department receives.
And we also have Natasha Baker, who has joined us as an ed research consultant in the Office of Educational Improvement and Innovation. Natasha?
Yep, so, good afternoon, everyone. Again, I'm Natasha Baker. I'm a former teacher, dean, principal, assistant, soup in places like Compton, New York City, and Post Catrina, New Orleans. And I work with Linda Ford in the Office of Education Improvement and Innovation.
Great.
I'd like to introduce, after a year of vacancy, Caitlin Farick. So, help you with your doing.
My name is Caitlin Farick, and I am the new Head Start State Collaboration Office Director in the Office of Head Start here at the department. Basically, my position, I am here to work with Head Start grantees to help them link to services that will improve Head Start programs across the state, and also to serve sort of as voice for Head Start in the overall early childhood system in Michigan. Back in my summer life, I was a Head Start teacher in Los Angeles, and I went to law school at the University of Wisconsin. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Emily Purvis. Emily is in the Office of School Support Services. Welcome.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. I am working with school nutrition programs. I am split between Teen Nutrition Michigan, doing a lot of their social media, Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, so please like Teen Nutrition Michigan on Facebook. And also, working with the National School Lunch Program, doing administrative review. Thank you very much.
Uh-oh. Our leaders are gone.
Well, go on.
Thank you, Vanessa and Linda. This is the continuation of the committee of the halls, so I don't have to recall the meeting or anything, I don't think. Is that right, Bill?
You're going to item C, that's correct.
Okay, so, and you know, in the past few years, the education community has taken steps to improve the level of education, as you know. The Michigan Mercurriculum and Exam, new standards for English, Language Arts, and Math, new cut scores to align with Career and College Ready, on and on. We've heard from classroom teachers and other educators from across the state about these changes, and the role that each will play in developing the system that needs to move forward. We've not heard the voice of the student in any systemic way. That's what you're going to hear right now.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you all for having us today to talk about, this is an exciting project, I think, and an exciting time for us to hear, like Mike said, from someone we don't hear from a lot at this table, and we don't hear from a lot at this department, the students. So we have a core of initiatives that we're working on. We're working on closing the achievement gap, and being college and career-ready, raising achievement, and digital learning and technology, and a number of things. But all of these things are experienced by students. That's ultimately who we're focused on, that's ultimately who we care about. And all these new initiatives, as you can see from the quote here, no matter how well they're executed, won't be successful if we don't get students themselves to embrace them. And so Linda has been taking the lead on this project. It's kind of a multi-phase project, but the first part is to understand more about what students, where students are at in terms of our education system, their own learning, and a number of other topics. So we wanted to show this important data to you at this point, to kind of inform all of our collective work together, as we think about how to improve education for Michigan students. Yep, and we had, Linda reminded me, I had one more slide. We had several goals in doing this, and we want to have these various reform initiatives be successful, especially students who, especially among those who are eligible for Title I funds, and that's a large portion of our state, our districts and schools have our eligible-for-title funds. So we wanted to build student enthusiasm for school and learning. And we wanted to strengthen bonds among the stakeholder groups, so teachers, and students, and parents, and us as well. And then we wanted to look at how you can motivate all those groups to play their role across the depth of challenge, or the breadth of challenges that we face. Again, school is about a community of students and teachers and administrators, working to improve achievement, and so getting those different stakeholders to work together. And then the final one, as we already said, was to really give students a voice. Although there are 1.5 million students in the state, it can be hard to talk to them all as much as we'd like, we wanted to start to systematically understand more about what they were experiencing on the ground level.
So what we're going to start with is a short video clip of some students that were interviewed this summer. They're bringing to light some of the conversations that we've had, and we'll go over the data after you see that, but first of all, here are some video clips from this summer.
The group I hung around with the people who really was motivated for us. Yeah, I'm doing the same thing, maybe, maybe, and it's just, I feel I'm wasting my time with us. Quite a good amount of time to class, so, that we're more interested in useful advice.
Some kids like to rebel, and think, and do their work, and still think they're going to get a good grade. My mom doesn't tell me, like, we're the anti, she keeps giving me strategies.
Parents are my friends, I teach with them. So, depending on what's at hand, we can talk.
The classroom at the most, really, like, even the little five-year-olds have academics, they're still on the run, because they're ahead of the front row. No, they're just boring, no one really wants to learn, they're just, they really don't care.
There aren't that many classes to take that many students are interested in, and therefore, many students lose their motivation to take certain classes and to succeed.
Kids just, they're just, because they have to, they said they have to, not because they want to. They should want to learn, and realize that, hey, like, I'm going to be good, so I'm not a teacher, and that's like, that's like, not in their heads.
I used to be around the people that, like, really wanted to know something else. I've met the people who want to be thirteen, talk about sex, it's raining, smoking, I used to be around the people that really wanted to learn. If there was forty students in the class, it was probably 10% who wanted to do more than they were trying.
I think this happened because a lot of the smart kids are the ones that get called nerds, because they wear glasses, and they walk around with their books, and they kind of dress the way that you actually should dress, like you're ready to learn. Some of them can really be smart, but they really act like they're not, but they can really be smart.
Happens to some kids, because sometimes they want to be cool, but they don't want to, it's hard to communicate.
And a lot of kids, some people be getting mad at my school, like, I have a lot of friends that are really, really smart. And two of my other friends are just act like they just don't want to learn, get mad when I heard them, like, why you want to hang with her, she's a nerd, what you mean? She's somebody you should want to be around, because I'm trying to pass.
They would think, oh, that's not cool, no one wants to be smart, and they're like, they want to go and have fun. The people who are smart, I think that they want to be actually in a group that, the people who have fun, they're good, they want to be smart, too.
So, that's students and their own voices. Let's take a look at what's behind that data. First of all, our approach was to work collaboratively with the K-12, Department of K-12 Outreach at Michigan State University. And we have been able to survey over 2,000 students and parents in matched groups, with mom and the kids, or dad and the kids, 970, I'm sorry, yeah, 975 teachers, 327 principals, and 50 superintendents. And so we have been able to talk to a lot of people across the state about how students seem to perceive learning. We were able to do that through the assistance of the Ed Alliance, and so they have brought their membership to bear, and helped us to make contact with those folks. We talked one-on-one with some parents and students. I want you to note that we did talk to fourth through 12th graders, and so we've got some of the youngest kids, all the way up to some of the high school kids, that you did see a little bit more represented in the video clip. We also were able to use the Harrison Group, which is a research and consulting firm, to execute these studies, to interpret the data, and to help us devise ways to maximize our chances of success at getting information. What we want to do is make learning a moral imperative for kids and for others around the state that are involved in education. In order to do that, we need to understand that the kids really are in charge. They're the ones who make the decisions. And it's interesting when you realize, with the average age, that parents say children take control over some of the things that they do. They begin to decide when they're going to do fun reading, at probably about the age of nine, they say, well, I'll, you know, they'll go off in a corner, they'll read a book. How they spend their money, they begin to take control of that at age 12. Motivation to get to get good grades, age 10. Time put into homework, age 11. I'm not going to read them all for you, but you see that it's a very young age when students begin to take control over what their outcomes are going to be. Kids also know that everybody plays a role in this. It's that they know that students needing, being motivated to learn is a key, and 93% of them see that as either absolutely important or very important. They also say that teachers expecting that all students can master what is taught in school is a key, and parents being involved in their education is important to them as well. Parents and teachers tend to agree with that. Parents and teachers almost lined up directly that students need to be motivated to learn in order for there to be good outcomes. High degree of importance for teachers having high expectations, and parents being involved in their children's education. What we've learned through our study that we need to do is to ensure relevancy of content and instruction to increase student interest in learning. We're going to talk about that in a minute, some of the data. We need to change peer dynamics, so academic success promotes, not hampers, social status, something we need to reach out to kids in order to do. And we need to provide ways for parents and teachers to forge deeper relationships of service, in service of students and their success. Take a look at all three of those. So engagement and learning and content relevancy, some of the biggest problems in schools. Making students want to learn. I don't know how we make them want to learn, but how we can encourage them to see the light of learning might be important. You heard it on the video, not enough different subjects. As I get older, I need something different. I've studied US government, how many times? Their eyes, their point of view. Getting students' interest in holding it. Sometimes, some of the equipment's missing or broken, said a fourth-grade boy. Hard to learn. Kids know that they're disengaged. So here are the kids, and they say that it's very true of them, 38% gives their best effort at school. 26% are motivated to learn. 22% think learning is fun. 27% look forward to going to school. We compare that to parents, and how they feel about their kids, and almost a one-to-one Student engagement generally decreases with age. This statement is very true of me, said the students. The blue is grades four through five. When I'm at school, I'm motivated to learn. 28%. They did use a different word than motivated when we asked the question, just for clarification there. 26%, I find learning fun. 21%, I look forward to coming to school. 28%, when I'm at school, I'm interested in learning what my teachers are teaching. We'll add the fourth, or the sixth to eighth graders, nine to 10, 11th and 12th graders. We're facing a major challenge. What kids do want is relevant content and clear goals. Notice that they find, they say that, 93% of them say that it's either absolutely important or very important that schools are teaching subjects and skills that will prepare students for college or a job. 89%, learning things that will, that set a solid base for what will be taught the next school year. And 87% schools have clear goals that say what students should learn. However, this is what they describe as being true for their school. 50% describes their school well, across the board. So while they see those as being very important, they don't think that that describes their school. Half of them do, I should say. We do not do a good job of articulating relevancy and purpose of content. 93% say that it's very important to them to have an understanding of why they're being taught the things that they're being taught. However, 43% of them say that that's what describes their school very well. Students and parents alike think schools focus too much on memorization. Okay, and you've got the students on one side, the parents on the other. Resources matter to kids. 95% of them say teachers having the materials and the things that they need to teach students is very important, using technology. Schools quickly stepping in to help students who are falling behind. 92% of them see that as being very important. However, 44% say that that describes their school well. See the other percentages there. Students and parents say technology can increase engagement and learning. The difference that technology would make in students or parents making school more fun or interesting, 86% of the students feel that technology would make a difference there, a big, a difference. Parents, 83%. But what I find most interesting here is that the kids, as well as the parents, both see that it's very important to have technology in order to help students learn. Those percentages are fairly close to the other ones that you have there. Parents and students are largely in sync about technology, and how it could be helpful in anytime, anyplace learning, in raising achievement, and in personalized learning. And you'll notice that there are pretty significant percentages there. Peer dynamics is a very important piece in schools. Students say the biggest problem in their schools, some students try to drag down the rest of the students, that's my school's greatest weakness, or too many students not there to learn, they think it's a popularity contest, or too many students acting out in classrooms to stop teachers from teaching. Very few students think that their friends strongly value learning. So, this is what the kids think, their friends think, about how important it is to do well in math, English, or in science. They do think that their parents think it's important to a greater degree. And what's really interesting with this one is they sit in the middle. So never doubt that adults and parents can have a strong influence on students, and what they're going to do, and how they're going to perform. Parents do matter. Promoting learning. Taking a look at this one, let's take a look at staying out of trouble. How do they set up? They think that their parents are really strong on not, on them not getting into trouble. Asking teachers for help with school subjects when needed, having excellent attendance at school, and participating in class discussions. Students recognize that engaging in school can put social standing at risk. I think the good news here is that while the percentages are not insignificant, they are not the majority. 45% of them agree that trying to do well in school is a reason some kids get made fun of at my school. I worry that what my group of friends might think of me if I were to participate a lot in class. I want to bring you back to our goals. Help ensure success. We need to build student enthusiasm for school and learning, strengthen the bonds among stakeholder groups, motivate stakeholder groups to play their role, and give students a voice. We are working on some of those through some of the instructional components that we're working, that we're devising in our office, in having students become more invested in the actual learning process and not just in memorization. We're trying to model that for teachers. Also, the MISA units are doing that. We think that we're going to be able to work with the PTA and some of the Ed org groups who are very invested in this work to build some bonds and some greater stakeholder involvement. And my staff is beginning to work on what we might do to have an ongoing dialogue with students beyond the gathering of the data, although I see these data as being pretty significant when you look at the numbers we were able to raise.
So, for that, Mike?
You know, I've admitted this before. I don't know if I've done it in this forum, but as a kid growing up in Brooklyn, New York, I couldn't stand up to some of the pressure you're talking about, so I didn't carry books home. And I basically confiscated another set so that I could have it at home, so it didn't look like I really cared about the learning. And I think the reality is we have to try to think of ways to accommodate that, not just expect kids to rise above it. You know, I mean, peer pressure is what peer pressure is at different points in time. I think I grew out of it eventually, although some would say not yet, but getting there. But I think it's really a problem that we, if we can't help accommodate kids who really want to learn but also want to be cool, that can be a very difficult thing and not going to help anyone. So, board, questions, comments? Kathleen?
Well, I'm glad to have this information because we've been talking about how do we involve students and get their opinions, and this is a good, good start. This is great. One of the things that I don't see mentioned here, maybe it is that I didn't see it, is relationships between the teacher, teachers and the students and the, well, there is something about relationships between the students and the students, but not between the teachers or the staff and students. I think that's a key factor in having people see the relevance of what they're learning, being taught, that they're not learning it, but they're, what they're being taught. So, I don't know how you measure that, but that's the question I would ask in addition to these. But how are we going to continue, you're going to, what are you going to do to continue to hear student voices?
We're able to replicate this, at least for another year. And we're looking at in-house, what might we do to develop some other supports for hearing student voice in more concrete ways?
So, like Linda said, this is kind of phase one of a couple-year project, and there's other, within this project, there's other opportunities for it, but we want to institutionalize it more too. I wanted to call out your point about relationships. The one that struck me is on the slide that says, "Parents and teachers know everyone plays a role," and how important parents, how important they said, the kids said, and the parents said, it's important that teachers expect that all students can learn the content. And just, relationships aside, believing that all kids can learn, and I don't know if we're at a place yet in our system where all teachers, all educators, all of us, all everybody believes in their heart that all kids can learn at a high level. And that's the relationship, that's the core of the relationship, I think, that's going to matter the most in schools, is that you think I can do it, and you want to see me do it as a student, no matter who I am, no matter where I come from. So, that's kind of compelling data to hear the students and the parents saying that back to us, and something that I think we have to keep working on at all levels of the system.
Students knowing that teachers believe in them and are willing to invest in them is key, and it comes out, and this, these are some of the data, and it comes out.
Okay.
Gary, since you haven't spoken yet today? Go ahead. And then Dan, and then John.
Thanks. Well, thank you very much for this presentation. And I would agree that one of the things that stood out to me most was the idea that teacher expectations was a big, a big part of this. The other one that stood out to me was how closely tied, although it wasn't really surprising, that parent and student perceptions were very similar. And it just reminded me of the idea of a mindset that we have in classrooms and in schools in general with students, that we come oftentimes from a place of scarcity, that you either have the knowledge, you either have the skills, you either have the ability, or you don't. And that oftentimes, if we're perceiving someone to have something that there's a limited or a scarce amount of, that can generate a sense of jealousy. And I was thinking about how it is weird that we still have a, even a fraction of students who would say, "It's uncool to be smart or to try in school." Makes me just think that somebody who believes that they can't do it, or they believe that they, they don't believe in themselves, would feel envious of someone who could, because they're coming from a place of scarcity. And it comes back to this mindset that, they even said it in there, it's not fixed. That it's not just about the facts, that there's more to it, that they want, they want more than just, "I remember these things about history. I remember these things about whatever it might be." And that, that idea that there's only one right answer, there's only these things to know, and it's a closed-ended situation, just supports that idea that things are fixed and that you either have it or you don't, or you can't get it or you can. And I wonder if there's a way to help shift teachers and parents and students altogether in that mindset, from a fixed mindset to a growth mindset, so we can come from a place of abundance, where we know that even if you're successful and I'm not right now, that doesn't mean that I can't ever be. I guess it's more commentary than a question. I apologize for.
An excellent one that it is. So, thank you. Dan and John?
I'll engage in a little commentary too. All right. So, one comment and two questions. And really appreciate your point, Gary. I think a lot of the literature on the growth mindset, if you're unfamiliar, would suggest that self-efficacy, right? Students actually coming to believe that I can do this and that my hard work will help me do this matters. And there are other things that matter too, and we can't ignore. I think it's particularly important that we pay attention to those things, condition setting and whatnot. But all of that is for naught if students would actually believe that they can. So, one comment, and just a quick observation, like on page 27, at least on this handout, the slide here around the very few students think their friends strongly value learning. Just a quick takeaway from this. My sense about it, so the numbers are still too low in terms of number of students that strongly agree that I think this is important. They're generally in the forties, but the, the dichotomy between that and the twenties suggests that the problem, part of the problem at least, is not that eighty percent of students or, you know, seventy-eight percent of students don't actually value learning. It's that most kids, or kids think most of their friends don't, when in fact, half of them do, the numbers would suggest. And so, it's a perception issue, at least in part. I think that's just an important nuance to take away, and you're shaking your head. You obviously got that. Two quick questions. One is, so was this grant-funded work? And if so, who was it and what restrictions are on it and that kind of thing? And then, second is, I don't know if you know this at all, but I'm just curious about what number of schools or what percentage of individual schools in particular, but even districts or charter school boards or whomever the governance structure is, what percentage of them actually have formal mechanisms for involving students in the governance of that school or district? Do you happen to know?
I do not. To the latter, I do not. Something that we could inquire about, I suspect, I don't know.
I don't want to make more work for you around that, but if this is a two-year grant and there are funds available in the second year, it just might be an interesting thing to know. Might inform us in perhaps, you know, creating some kind of a model policy around actually involving students in the governance of their school.
Yeah.
What do you think about doing the governance of this table? It's like a teacher of the year. You know, we've talked, how do we, is that possible? Is it feasible? So, state's doing. So, interesting. I know NASB has some information on that. Yeah.
John, please.
My question was the same as Dan's. Who paid for this?
It's through grant funding, and it's through the priority and focus schools. We have people going into schools trying to raise achievement. And the question became one of, so what if the kids don't want to learn? And we kept hearing from the teachers, what, you know, blaming, blaming the kids, put it out on the kids. So, we wanted to know what the kids thought, and what they, what they would react to, and whether or not we had any inroads and any places that we could go. And so, because we could get access to the Harrison Group and their work at a very good rate, we were able to access it that way, and we'll be able to continue it for another year.
The source of the grant fund?
Grant, federal funds.
Federal money.
Title I school improvement funds.
Oh, it's just Title I schools that we did this in?
No. We were able to survey in areas that would have a preponderance of Title I students. We couldn't go directly to the schools. We had to do a broader scan.
You said that the school improvement funds?
Title I school improvement funds.
Okay.
For the priority and focus schools.
Cassandra and then Michelle.
I just have a quick question. I mean, you said that it kind of raised a question in my mind, and that is, did we ask the students any questions about what they feel about our standardized tests? Because I know when I ask question, when I ask students this question, they're usually like, "Yeah, we don't think much of it because we know it doesn't have any impact on our grade." I'm curious if we included anything like that.
We did not.
That might be an interesting question.
We made it up.
We did. We didn't present these data here, maybe there for another time possibly, but we did ask them some things about, are you aware of this, you know, what a priority school is, or what's the top-to-bottom list, or what are, what is, what are the Common Core State standards? And so...
Do you ask students this?
Mm-hmm. So, we didn't ask them specifically, what do you think when you take a test? But we did say, are you aware of what Common Core State standards are? In general, we learned the awareness is relatively low. So, we would like to increase that at the student level as well, although you could argue it's more important that they learn the content and not the name for it, but...
And your question, I think, even goes deeper. I think there's a lot of kids beyond standardized tests that have no hope and can't quite understand why even the test they're taking, you know, by a teacher on a given day is any meaning to them. So, it's all part of that package, but I think it would be very interesting to know. With the standardized test thing, it has implications to it for other people.
Right.
And if they don't care, then others paying the price for it. Michelle, you were next.
Yeah. No, I think this is great, and I, I think it's really important to listen to kids and, you know, I, and I think of my kids who, you know, I try to get them to school sometimes, and, you know, as they get older, they don't want to go. But this, I think there's a bunch of reasons, and not necessarily because the class isn't interesting enough, although I think that would be, that would go, that would be helpful. Anyway, I just, you know, I've been learning more that there's data that, that we're not able to collect, and I'm told sometimes it's because of, you know, the Headley Amendment or whatever, on just some basic data that'd be good to have, like discipline, or how, like the, you know, the effects of, you know, expulsion, have you been expelled, or have you been suspended, or it, punish, or there are, is, there is alternative ways of dealing with behavior, because the kids have brought up misbehavior in the classroom, and it seemed to be, well, how do they deal with that behavior in your school as a way to, I guess, figure out what the climate is like there? And then, I've also been told that there's no data on just, like, class size. How many kids are in your classroom? Because that would seem to me would be harder to engage someone, especially at the lower levels, if the class sizes are really large. And that affects their engagement in school or not. And then, the, of course, the effects of, of the testing, and maybe even being labeled as failing school or a failing student.
Good points. I, you know, I'm wondering with, with that point, if the same way the board really develops policy statements for the legislature to consider, I'm wondering if there would be a policy statement or maybe just a letter to local board members, president, saying that nicely, but in effect, get off the Headley thing. You know, this is important data. It's not that big a deal. It's adding one other piece of information and maybe appealing to them, board to board, kind of directly, that we get it, it costs an extra cent to do that. But it seems like, I don't know that there's malice, but it blocks so many important things. How do we together make policy decisions related to expulsion, for instance, if we can't get data, because people say, "Well, that's just Headley." But I'm wondering if a direct appeal kind of, you know...
We're doing it under the grant. Would that be, I mean, if they're collecting data anyway, I mean, I know it's students responding, but it would be something, something.
Yeah. I'll think more about, if you'd be willing to think about that, we could give you a possible letter to, to sign that would encourage boards to...
That's a good idea.
And maybe give examples of, we think this, we wouldn't, we're not just asking you for data for data's sake. Here's a few examples that we hope you would consider. Please.
I'm sorry, just feeding off of that. I think I've made this point before, or kind of in compensation, compensation, if I have the right word, but in exchange for the cost savings you're entering because of all of the report consolidation that the state is working on, right? I don't know if I remember it, but you've shared with us that there are fewer reports they have to do as a result of this consolidation effort. So, why not turn some of that back into, you know...
We do that. We'll, we'll come up with a model letter that'll include both those points and see if you're okay with it. That's a good reminder, because I think we have actually done that after debrief and were able to substantiate what's gone. I mean, we're all human a little bit. It's like, well, that was, what have you done for us lately? You know, you got rid of those reports, but still, it would, it would remind them. So, very good. Richard?
I, I guess I would urge us all to, to take these findings with, with a grain of The, a lot of kids don't enjoy school. And a majority of those tend to be boys. My wife and I had very different experiences of school. She loved school all the way through, and I hated school until tenth grade. God has a sense of humor. I became a teacher. And...
Member of the State Board of Education.
Yeah. It's payback time. There you go. There you go. So, much for my psychic history, yes.
Yeah. Explains a lot.
But the forty years that I've been interested in these issues, you know, we have shifted towards a kinder, gentler approach to education and coercion, making a child do something against his will is now totally out of favor. In the nineteenth century, they said, "You can't teach a child anything until you break his will." And now, of course, we're, we're just on, on the opposite end of that here. And we sometimes fail to realize that, that this has a disparate effect on the social classes. Because kids whose parents read and, and respect learning, they'll, they'll come around. Girls especially want to please the adults. They want to get along socially, okay? There were times in my school career when I had the opposite feeling, you know, I wanted to annoy the teacher. Don't say anything. And, and as a teacher, I certainly got that back, as you've done to others, so it's done to you. Anyway, so I, I think that, that we sometimes have failed to acknowledge the trade-offs. All I'm saying is that when you make choices, there, there are trade-offs, they affect different classes of students in different ways. Sometimes we get lost in Never Neverland, and every kid should love school. That's unrealistic. Kids need to feel valued. I don't, I don't know that, that, I don't know that having kids sitting on a board like this or a school board makes any sense whatsoever. I think that when I, when my father would repair the car, I had an interest in cars, but, but he made me stand in the back of the garage and tell him if the brake light was going on. So, you can be a valuable participant and give valuable feedback, even if you don't exactly know what's going on. I think, I think we can affirm, we can affirm that. But once again, to have a realistic rather than a naive idea about student input or, or whatever else, as we, as we look at these kinds of data.
Thank you.
There.
Thank you. And I know we're, I'm getting some hints that, remember, we have, some of us have to leave. No, that's not you. That's on me. So, great on this. Thanks so much, guys.
Thank you.
And we're going to now move to the regular meeting. We're going to call it afternoon, the afternoon meeting. Hope you had a good lunch.
Yeah, thanks.
The time is now, no, that item was actually planned for afternoon, so we're good. The time is now three oh five PM. The former of the board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of December seventeenth is called to order. Approval of the State Board of Ed minutes. May I have an motion, please?
So, move.
Cassandra, supported by John. Any discussion?
I'll give the press.
Corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and Mertz did a good job on seven, public participation was very good, helpful today, thank you. In production, we did a new employees, John, President's Report.
I wish I could face the artful to the bunch of landmines with Richard.
The master.
Is that artful?
The master.
Sorry.
No.
I think Richard doesn't mind setting them off.
Right.
So, I want to thank the standards advocates who are here and there are more out there, there's, and for being here and articulating the reasons why and the urgency for us to move forward and the petition signers. And as we discussed, whenever I think the department's ready, we can cope with another standard setting round and whenever we as a board can move forward together to advance it, you know, I think it's important topic, yes, as you've heard and I think we'll hear more in the future. Two, I want to just finish and close with next steps on the discussion we had this morning about the turnaround district and strategy for underperforming schools and EAA. I think as we discussed, it is very important that we clarify policy guidance and provide encouragement to the most effective school turnaround strategy for chronically underperforming schools. I think we discussed today the contours of an approach that I think we can all support and that makes sense in terms of its being potentially an effective way to support these schools, which we do have to insist something different happening. So I think we need to define further the nature of appropriate legislation and/or clear authority for the superintendent and criteria that would allow the state reform officer and district to place schools in perhaps a variety of settings where they can be managed by other public schools, ISDs, other public bodies, but with clear criteria and expectation, not more than expectation, clear criteria that they can be effectively managed and there's quality control and that there are going to be those doing that work, whether it's a district or ISD or others, who have the ability to turn them around, a proven record of it or the clear likelihood and proven ability to manage effective turnaround. And then within all that, we need to clarify the role and the next steps for the EAA itself. So I am asking our legislative committee and our agenda setting group to work on our policy articulation and encouragement of the helpful legislation and/or criteria that allows us to frame that and help make it so with others, I hope collaboratively with only the superintendent, but with the legislature and the governor's office, so. Free, I will, I wanted us to talk a bit about the big topic that we do want to continue to work on, school finance, way we need to inform the organization and ideas for solutions to the school finance crisis. I'll make it shorter than given the hour and we'll pick it up in the new year. But I think it is real important that we pass these around to everybody. This is the second paper of really a three-step process that we want to finish and roll together in the new year that is about first identifying root causes of the school finance crisis, what's driving the stress and funding stress, which, and related, performance stress of our schools, what are solid ideas for changes that need to be made to do better? And what can we, I mean, our work can range from our own advocacy as a state board to advance the understanding of the issues and solutions to the issues, partnership with the superintendent, with, we're eager to work with the governor's office if they want to advance understanding and ideas. And even finding three or four or five pieces of this that can be agreed on a bipartisan way with the legislative work group that Cassandra and Eileen are participating in with Representative Rogers. But I think we do need to continue to advance this understanding and this agenda. The first paper that was done by the Education Policy Center that we discussed a couple months ago, had really 15 or 18, it was more of a laundry list, but I think a helpful identification of issues that are contributing to the financial crisis that range from just demographic changes, reduced numbers of students, the fact that new schools are being created against this landscape and there's increased competition for those schools and students. We have huge pension, MIPS, cost issues to figure out how to deal with. We have real cuts in funding for K-12 and taking K-12 funding and using it pre-K and higher ed, which we're all for doing more for pre-K and higher ed, but it's having some real impact. We have real implications from the foundation grant model in terms of it seeming driving rapid changes in resources based on movements of people. And really, some unintended consequences, there's no differential funding for more expensive education services for different age or high school students, for poor students, so we're seeing some real impacts from that. We have districts and lack of movement on consolidation and shared service, which Mike has been pointing to, that could be a piece of the mix. We have the fact that what was anticipated, our ability to raise some local resources while proposal aid drove equity through a regional enhancement mill, it just did not work. It did not prove a politically viable option for raising more money locally, so there's certainly some interest in how could we help in responsible ways locals realize that piece of proposal aid. Proposal aid did not attend to capital, buildings and technology now, computers and all this stuff that, there's no effective vehicle particularly for poor, low TV districts to raise money for that. And we've driven collectively a set of reforms, whether it's common high standards or teacher evaluation and tenure reform, that have been decoupled from resources to potentially support those reforms or even to support the work of the department and helping implement the reforms. So there's a whole combination of things that we need to really look at the root causes here. And, you know, I appreciate Mike's articulation of a Marshall Plan, some robust strategy for responding to the fiscal crisis and that is seeing many schools, most of our schools and even quality charter schools experiencing financial distress. We saw that Moody's study, which, you know, acknowledged just from a fiscal reality the fact that the rather open new school creation charter regime is creating fiscal dynamics. Put aside whether you view them as high performing, low performing, whatever. So that analysis, and we actually had a very excellent critique of that first paper. I mean, we heard some critique at the board table, but we had a good critique. Michelle and Kathy were there, we had a session with some education policy experts. Eileen was going to come, we didn't want to have a forum, it'd be out of line, but we had the folks from U of M, Phil Kearney and MSU and Mike Adenizio and the CRC and Amber and Ed Trust and some Glazer, really taking, the Center for Michigan with what they're hearing, take a look at what that analysis said. And they were very helpful in saying, you need to sort of package these 18 or 20 laundry list items into, you know, what's the right three or five bundles of things that are important, but they were, I think, affirming, you were there, that these are facts of the case that need to be arrayed and understood better. And they were willing to help in their independent work to do that. So we need to continue to wrap that understanding together. The second paper, which again needs further refinement and development, I wanted to share it, was that they would say, okay, what can we learn from other states? The way they organize and finance education. And examined some states on two criteria, are they like us demographically? Are they, do they have similar numbers, similar racial profiles, similar numbers of kids in poverty? So that's even the Ohio's and the Pennsylvanias and the Floridas and the Georgias. And then, and/or are they a high performing state achievement wise? Or perceived to be a big reformer? Florida, Massachusetts, Maryland are all getting a lot of attention for their achievement, achievement gains, reform initiatives. So I just, you all, I hope had a chance to look at some of that, I won't, we'll come back to more about what we can actually pull out of all that. But I think it is interesting to look at some of the beginning points that may emerge from looking at other states, that they, pretty high performers really perpetuate a culture of investing in education. The highest achieving states, the Massachusetts and Maryland's have post-recession even put more money into education while most every other state has been continued to cut. They tend to have a commitment and strategy for quality on their own schools, turning them around, supporting them, or new school creation, making sure they're of quality and not across the board. There's a lot of difference between us and them in providing differential funding for different students with different needs, poor ESL and different costs, rural, urban transportation. So they have more elaborate and nuanced strategies for putting money where it may be important to put money. Teacher quality, teacher quality support, clear path of importance, flexibility, but continuity of funding so that it's stable as we hope to, proposal aid would be. And then some innovation in the way we do benefits, which, you know, portable, flexible, but making sure that it's funded, some of these legacy costs issue. So there may be some things to pull out from there. What I'm proposing for all of us is that we begin and will frame up in the new year, you know, a set of activity for us where we continue to both digest and make sense of and build forward some of this understanding and what our recommendations and ideas are. And we'd be very active in our own work here at the board, in our work out in the state and in pulling together good analysis and integrating it as part of our shaping of the understanding and then an agenda to contribute to this as we move ahead. So I wanted to at least introduce that and that we engage the education stakeholders writ large and saying, this is important to help shape how we organize and finance education, what we doing here today is not working. And the major reason to do any of this is that it's about our kids' learning and are we getting the outcomes we want? So everything we do, and this is something that we talked about in the meeting with some of the experts, it's got to be organized around how do we spend money in order to contribute to better outcomes? And that's the kind of thing we have to help point the way to, so.
Thanks, John. In terms of the soup report, I'm going to reduce it to two items. One, first of all, I thank the board for, John, for your asking that the committee, the legislative committee with Cassandra, look at how we might frame this thing related to legislation. And last week, when we postponed the naming of schools because I wasn't comfortable with the only option being the EAA, we followed it up the next day, just to help people understand the logic of this, we thought anyway, we followed up the next day and we realized people, because we're inside baseball, we're missing some of the points, so we were more explicit and said, we need other operating entities. We need other operating entities before I'm comfortable to put schools in. So that was last Thursday, got a fair amount of play, but I appreciate really the opportunity to think it through today a little more and then also to ask the committee to try to support other entities that we can feel comfortable with, because I for one, I'm not comfortable with the EAA at this point as the entity. The second thing is, I really think it's great to continue on the finance role and I do appreciate your acknowledging the Marshall, the so-called Marshall Plan. This is, I was doing a, what had it been, a deficit elimination hearing, joint hearing, and there's one senator that's always pushing back and it's not about money, it's not about money. And I finally just said, because I don't want to project as the state soup that it's only about money, but there's a point, so I was just thinking out loud and said, you know, why isn't there something like a Marshall Plan? Because this is the same body that is saying, let's have high stakes tests to retain kids in third grade based on one test, but maybe don't understand if we had a Marshall Plan so that if you can identify, and we can by the way, we've got this data now, we can identify out of the 4,000 schools, the ones that kids come to school not knowing their letters, not knowing what some other kids have the benefit of, and then we turn around and still expect them with no additional resources to meet that same goal by third grade. So even if it wasn't this heavy penalty possibly of, with all the psychological research around the danger of that automatic retention aside, but even with our hope that all kids can read at grade level by third grade, it's not going to happen if we don't focus on the schools that have the most struggling situations to put more resources in. And I would say this, that I think our experience through the early childhood funding says that we have a legislature and a, well, we have the legislature and the governor that we have, and I'm happy to work with whoever's ever in charge, but they've demonstrated clearly they're willing, apparently clearly through early childhood funding, that I would not have guessed they would have done a few years ago, they're willing to look at targeted money. So I mean, I hope what we can project together is that it should be both. You need increases in the foundation, but you also need targeted money. And then, I'll just going to say this, because we're going to have to do this, we're going to have to ask our friends in the education community to support that. Because as much as it sounds like that's a no-brainer, I've been in that other world, I've been in the association world, and the pressure on them is to cross the board money. It's just the pressure. Everyone gets the same. So I think they get it intellectually, we have to help them have some understanding of the merit that, yeah, let's get an increase in the foundation, but some of it, like early childhood, needs to be targeted and would love to be part of that with the board as you develop that further. And then these other, because I saw the look I got from Cassandra, these other four pages I'm skipping today, and I'll have them ready now or ready for next meeting, because they're not, you know, they don't have to be done today.
I want to commend John for pushing ahead with this and with these papers that he gotten done by MSU's Policy Center, that's been very helpful. And I think it's really important that we do it soon because I'm, I don't know for a fact, but I have a gut feeling that we're going to be faced with some of the same proposals that we defeated last year, we'll be back, if not exactly the same, but very similar. And I think we have to be prepared to come with something that's positive.
Appreciate that, Catherine.
Sooner rather than later.
Contributing the right ideas, the better and the effective that are thoughtful and positive and not react to stuff.
Right, that's why I think we have to have our own plan to...
Gary, Lupe.
Ideas to propose.
Yes, ma'am.
I did have one.
No, Lupe.
Okay, I guess I have to say that I appreciate the clarification that you Superintendent Flanagan have made this afternoon with the situation in the EAA, and I'm hoping that it's understood that there's not going to be any movement this year, 2013, nor 2014, until there's things in place that we can move forward with. So I think it is clear to, in my mind, what your intention is and so, and we're going to have some kind of policy together to even clarify it some more. Because this has been very troubling in a lot of people's minds around the table, around the state, and I think this, what you just said, again, has cleared my mind as to what's going to happen from now on. I'm hoping that everybody's on the same page and we all understand each other as to what is going to happen with EAA.
Right. You know, and just to follow on that, thank you for that first of all, but we were more optimistic that what we wrote last week was clear. But as I said, even when we did a very specific press release saying we need other entities before we're going to move them, somehow that got lost in the works. I do think that's the most crucial point, and I will admit, being naive about one thing, I thought right up to the last minute that we were going to get that from the legislature. And we thought that by putting a little more pressure on that entity issue and by putting more pressure on the fact that we're going to move schools, might have come to that realization, it didn't. But I'm hopeful that particularly the board's thinking about this, our own thinking, working together on that, we can get some legislation that will build on the 2009 legislation. And as I said to you this morning, we're carrying out the 2009 legislation, that's what this was all about. But there's defects in the operating entities and there's also not clarity about how to get out when you get in. That's the two most troubling points.
That's another part.
If you were to put a school in, we have to have clarity about what would be those circumstances where they can and should go back to their local district. So we learned a little last week on the legislative process, they're home with their constituents right now, I'm sure, as I said, working hard, so they weren't able to stay here this week and help wrap this up, but hopefully the new year will bring that together. So Gary, we've been looking forward to yours and we're going to, or not?
Is it possible for us to legislative committee first?
Absolutely, let's do that.
That way I have enough time to...
Can you hold one?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Sure thing.
Thank you, Gary.
Sure thing.
Do you need this?
I'll be very quick. There was some legislation that was passed in the last couple of weeks, important legislation for schools. One was the, what was called the EpiPen bills. It would require school boards to develop and implement policies that provide each school to possess two EpiPens. If you're not familiar with what EpiPens are, epinephrine that can be delivered right to a child if they're having anaphylactic shock from a allergy, a peanut allergy or whatever. So it requires schools to have two of those on premises, and it requires training of two people in the school to, you know, administer those. So that's very important legislation. Another piece of legislation that passed, that the Governor signed this afternoon actually, would develop an OK to Say hotline. It's a hotline that students can use 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. It's a confidential tip line to help prevent school tragedies. Schools can report, or students can report bullying or any other kind of threats to schools or to themselves or to anyone in a school situation. The program includes a hotline that will accept tips by phone, text message, email, website, or multimedia device, operates 24 hours a day, every day of the year, and will protect confidentiality and the identity of the person reporting. Another bill that was moved out of the Senate Education Committee, it's on the floor of the Senate now, it's waiting for action, is Senate Bill 74, which was cyberbullying. It would amend Matt's Safe School Law and require a school district, a PSA, and an ISD to include cyberbullying as a form of bullying in their local board policy. Local boards would have to include cyberbullying in their local policy by the beginning of the 2014-15 school year, and we did discuss this at the Legislative Committee meeting, and I believe Cassandra has developed a statement for the Board to consider.
So, yes. So we were asked to consider creating a statement of support regarding this, which we did. It's a very, very small, short statement that simply reads, "The State Board of Education's Legislative Committee," I'm sorry, "The State Board of Education supports Senate Bill 74, a bill to amend Matt's Safe School Law to include cyberbullying as a form of bullying." So the Legislative Committee is recommending that the full Board approve this statement that can then be sent to members of the Legislature.
Is that a motion from the Chair?
It's, yep. I've moved Kathy or Michelle.
Supported. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same? Thank you. Excellent.
I have a question too, Marty.
Yes, ma'am.
On that hotline, you said K-12 in all colleges and universities, any school?
It's correct. I mean, it's not, it's going to be a hotline that is operated from an outside entity. They first talked about having it housed in the state police somewhere, but from what I understand, the bill as it passed would put it out for a request or proposal to someone, to an outside entity to operate this 24-hour-a-day hotline. So it's open to everybody. I mean, teachers could use it, administrators, anyone, you know, can use this.
Anywhere.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Gary?
No, Gary. Thank you for pausing about my break.
Well, I know it's 3:30, and I'm going to save the video clips I have for next year. I think we've seen some really great stuff today, and I want to honor your time as well. But the last month has been a little bit less eventful than the month before, which was, I think, a really great thing for my wife, so we got to spend some more time together, and I didn't travel as much, which was good. So I'm getting into that mindset. But I had a really interesting experience the day after Thanksgiving. I had the opportunity to be in a float, my own Michigan Teacher of the Year float in their own town parade in Gross Point. And this is their annual Santa Claus parade, and they have, they're all local groups, the Boy Scouts troop and the school band and things like that, all have their own individual floats. So I got to ride in a convertible driven by our school superintendent.
Were you the Santa Claus, or were you, this was you?
This was just me, yep.
There's at least a dozen of my wife's family and cousins.
Oh, really?
That I didn't know you were in it, or I would have told them to. Be prepared with the interesting projectiles.
That's all right. They wouldn't have been able to miss me. Giant decals on the side, but I had plenty of family there to heckle me throughout the travels. It was great. But I've continued some really strong work in the Gross Point schools as an instructional coach, and one of the things that's happened is I've been working heavily at the district level to help them set up and prepare for a technology and infrastructure bond, that the language of which was approved by our school board, and it's going to be on the ballot in February for us to update our technology infrastructure, helping us to prepare partly for these 21st century assessments that we heard about this morning, and as well to prepare us for some more mobile learning opportunities and digital learning opportunities. But this is a picture from a second-grade class that I worked with who has a set of some classroom iPads that they get to use with their students in learning stations. And so we were running through some visual literacy activities to help students go through vocabulary acquisition. And so they were taking photos of different things in the room to form a collage of images that had to do with one of their vocabulary words for the week, and then they would, they'd show those up on the smartboard using their Apple TVs, and the other students would have to guess what that word was that their pictures had to do with. So a really cool thing, I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of elementary schools in the last month, and it is just the most exciting thing coming from the secondary perspective, to be able to work with the younger kids and be able to see all the cool things that they are able to do and the talents that they bring to the classroom. So I know this has kind of been a theme of the afternoon, and I'm not going to be as impassioned about it, but at the Detroit Zoo this past weekend, the opportunity to run a Next Generation Science Standards training for chemistry teachers in the southeast Michigan area. This was Oakland County, Macomb County, and Wayne County teachers, and we had 31 teachers from a variety of schools around the area who came to learn about some of the science and engineering practices of the Next Generation Science Standards and get a sense, started to get their feet wet with, how do you do this in your classroom? And how do we shift from a place where the teacher's doing many of the things to a place where the students are doing more of the things? And that's kind of one of the things that you heard from some of our speakers during the public comment about Next Generation Science Standards, is that we're shifting to more student practices in addition to student knowledge of content area things. Another great opportunity I had was to present to the Rotary Club of Gross Point, and I was invited to be a keynote speaker where I gave a presentation on what I call the generational signposts of education, kind of going back about four generations to what did education look like, and what did the world look like, and what did technology look like in each of those generations, to kind of show a trend for how education's evolved to match up with what the world looks like, and technology opportunities to present a case for the need for things going on today that can help prepare students for tomorrow and not just what we see going on today. Additionally, last month in November, I had the opportunity to visit Rochester Community Schools and take part in a day-long tour with Representative Tom McMillan from the House Education Committee, and we visited an elementary school, a middle school, and a high school, where we spent a couple of hours at each building. We went and visited classrooms to see instruction, and then we also met with a roundtable group of teachers and administrators to discuss teacher evaluation. And this was an opportunity to give teachers a chance to share some ideas, ask some questions, and for administrators also to present some pragmatics of teacher evaluation view from the teacher end. And it was a great and productive day that allowed us to kind of share some ideas that can then be brought from and brought back to the House Education Committee as they try to translate the MCE report into legislation going forward. As you know, I'm the president of the Detroit Metro Area Physics Teachers Association, and we had our winter meeting at Romeo High School. It was my first visit to Romeo High School, but we had about 25 educators from around, again, the metro Detroit area, who came and presented ways that they're using the Next Generation Science Standards in their classrooms to teach physics, as well as some other handy demonstrations and lab techniques that they come to share with other teachers around the area. Had the chance to do some training for Oxford Community Schools, where I visited Oxford High School, and led a full staff development for their high school and middle school teachers on instructional best practices that stem from the Marzano Essential Nine Instructional Practices That Work series. I was also invited to go and visit TechSmith right down the road in Ockamas, where I got to work with them and their, one of their teams that's developing new products to serve education, and also to kind of give some feedback on products that they already have out there, and learn a little bit about some of their new mobile, mobile video capturing tools to allow full-class instruction and more collaboration between students using mobile devices. I attended the Network of Michigan Educators Conference right here in East Lansing just over a week ago, where I got the chance to see some of our own State Board of Education members who were participating in a panel. So you recognize some faces up there on this photo. And we had a great opportunity for teachers to ask some questions and to hear some great things from the State Board perspective, and Wendy offered some wonderful legislative information from her point of view. And then we also got to hear a keynote from Superintendent Flanagan at our luncheon, where he showed us this wonderful video, and I can't remember the title of the video, but I remember that it, I'm sorry.
Where is grandkids in it?
The one I referred to was not a grandkids video. This was one about that we have the opportunity to do things for others, and it was a video of, I believe, subway system in New York and a gentleman who fell asleep on the shoulder of someone else.
Oh, right.
And it filmed who would let him sleep on their shoulder, who would kind of shove him off. But it was just a really, it was something that stuck with me that you never know when these opportunities come up in life and that we have that same challenge and charge in education to do things for others. And finally, the last thing that came up this month is I had the opportunity to visit Lincoln Park High School over in Lincoln Park and lead a standards-based grading workshop for their grade level, I'm sorry, for their department's leaders. Their school is considering a push or a move to standards-based grading building-wide, and so they brought me in to help them kind of think about what would that look like. And I think I mentioned this to you last time, but I met with a teacher from North Point Academy in Highland Park, and he's got a really wonderful music class going on at the elementary level, where he has a special boys mentoring group that he runs outside of school called Beasts of the Beat, and they were featured on Fox Two's Holiday Connection. You may have picked them up, and I wasn't going to show you that video, but I'll save it for maybe the next time, because it's a few more minutes than we perhaps have for right now. But they had a great opportunity to perform on Fox, and they came out and filmed their classroom and interviewed some of their kids to see what a difference having a program that really invests more than just their knowledge and invests into them in their development, really kind of like the United Way presentation we saw last month, really spoke to what these students were able to do and what they were getting out of their life lessons in addition to what they were getting from music class. So with that, thanks again for the opportunity to be part of the State Board. Be getting ready next month to head to Scottsdale with the cohort of other state teachers of the year, and so as I'm learning a little bit more about some of those folks and getting to know them online, really looking forward to that national program and all the things that I have to look forward to it, and very grateful to be part of these discussions and to be able to share teachers' voice. So, hope you all have a great holiday and a new year. Dan.
Do you take all the photos yourself?
I do.
You have a good eye.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you for being part of this.
Oh, sure.
I'm glad you're here.
Yes.
I think you contributed a lot.
Really a help.
It would be helpful for your perspective on the science standard idea and issue to be fully heard and understood by all of us.
Okay.
Including encouragement on where, how we proceed and why it's important to proceed and what the nature of this is while we've got you.
And I'll be calling on you first, based on that. Every presentation, we're going to go.
Well, you know, if you know ahead of time when you feel like you'll be directly attacking that, you know, I can get in touch and you can find a way to best work together on that beforehand.
Thanks, Gary. Thanks for changing your original intent to be a doctor and come to this profession.
Yes.
It's very appreciated. And by the way, you gave an opening to Richard, who saw that arrow pointing to my head and said, what?
Why is it, why is it always aimed at you?
Yeah. Thank you. But I know it was men in good spirit, because I was kind of in the back there.
Yeah, I took a backseat at that.
Occupational habit.
Yes, yes.
No, and I can't, you know what's great about that group?
People who the State Board of Members were, they'd aim one at them, but.
Yeah.
You have to get the bag back, Richard, so.
Okay. Okay, well, I think we're, let's see, are we? Consent agenda.
Can we talk about the grant?
Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Take me back to my email.
Moved by Kathleen. Supported by Dan.
I'd like to.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I did have a question. Can I ask a question back?
We're kind of informal, technically, no.
Okay, okay, no. Sir, discussion, when is the discussion?
When, when?
Just on the number six, I just had a question about the technology readiness infrastructure grant, and I was wondering the criteria since, what is it, Utica, this was $5 million, right? Utica got $500,000. Romeo, no, Plymouth Canton next, Rome with $400,000, Romeo with $300,000, Luddington with $200,000, Zeeland Schools and West School District, I think both got over $100,000. So most of the money went to them. So I'm just wondering, I didn't see any money going to Wayne County or Detroit. So what was the, and very little going to like Pontiac and very little going to other areas that seem they would need help with their infrastructure.
All right, let's clarify that. That's a good question. And there is rationale for that.
Michelle, this is something I'm learning about right now as our district is proceeding through with our technology bond. We had Bruce, who came out and met with us in preparation, and so I learned a little bit about the same question that you had and how it looks.
The grant money? Because I didn't see Gross Point getting any money either.
Because ours isn't, well, I'm not going to.
Yeah, let's.
I wanted you to know that as I'm learning more about it, there's an explanation for it.
Good. Okay, so you said item six, the tech readiness infrastructure grant, and then you read off a list of names. So I'm just looking for where you are getting that from.
From the, it's hyperlinked when I went on to the, it has the grant, actual grant, and then who was awarded under the grant.
Right.
So that was through my hyperlink on my computer.
Okay, so I'll just address in general how these grants were awarded, at least at large scale, and then we can kind of get into some specifics if you want. Thank you very much, Chris. If you recall, and maybe you, maybe you don't, because we come and say a lot of things at the table, but we, this is the grant that we took the $45 million and we broke it into five separate funding streams. Okay. And each of them are competitively bid under different criteria. So there's a device purchasing stream where, that one's actually not competitively bid as.
Formula.
It's more of a formula, but they have to sign onto certain assurances in order to get the $10 per student toward device purchasing. And then there is, there's different pieces within the, well, that's the 22I. So six, you said, is the, sorry, there's a lot of tech grants.
The tech readiness infrastructure grant.
The 22I are the trade grants. That's the $45 million that we send out under five funding streams. Some are competitive, some are not. They're to build the overall infrastructure. There are, there's other ones, 22K and 22, you have all these listed, and they have different criteria as well. So you are asking about the 21, 22I and why certain ones got what they got?
And some of the more urban, well, that I, the ones that I noticed, like Detroit, Pontiac, it's got less, and Zeeland got $200,000, Luddington got $200,000.
The school districts have the ability, one, to participate, and two, to identify how much they want to spend within a set of parameters.
Okay.
And so this is the amount that was expended within that set of parameters and therefore awarded.
So Detroit and Wayne County RSD did not apply? Is that what you're saying?
Not that they didn't apply, they chose not to utilize the dollars for the fund, for the purchasing of devices. This is for statewide purchasing, and it was a pilot, and they chose not to be a part of it or were not able to utilize the dollars within the parameters that were set for them.
Bruce, did you have something to add to? Please.
I asked him to be around.
Yeah, no, I know. He heard you. Was that old teacher law? Not old teacher.
The participation grant, everyone received $10 a student if they could be to participate in the grant. The rest was based on whether or not they signed up for the other activities. One of the activities was a device purchasing pilot to see if we could have schools purchase their devices together. So Copper Country ISD put together a statewide bid and invited schools both to tell us how much they wanted to purchase, and so those were the devices that were bid, but also then to come on and buy off of those contracts. And so they received up to $100 per device if they buy off those state contracts. So what we were trying to do is get people to buy together, because right now districts do their own purchasing. So they used the state contracts, they purchased $39 million worth of equipment for $30 million. And we incentivized. And we incentivized $5 million of that purchase. So we gave them another $5 million of value, $100, right around about $98 per device for buying off that contract. The districts you're asking about didn't participate. They chose not to take their own funds and purchase. The ones that did are listed here, and then we awarded them up to $100 per device purchased.
The goal here is to drive the price down of the devices by doing group buying. So this was a pilot to see if we could continue that, move that process along.
So you said it was someplace up in the UP?
Yeah, the UP ISD, they organized it and ran it for the whole state.
For the whole state.
Yeah. Yeah, we have the entire state participating in the grant. There's five regions, and Copper Country is running the northern region, and they decided to take that activity and run it for the state.
Interesting that the big cities didn't want to do that.
Yeah, they wouldn't, they don't have more than anyone.
Yes, they do. They might not have been in the position to purchase. You know, there's a cycle that districts go through and refresh, and some districts chose to participate and some didn't. The ones that you mentioned also went out for a technology bond. So there were no limitations on the type of districts that could participate as long as they signed up for the initial participation.
Which I think is what, like, our district won't be in that position until next year.
So you'll do it then?
And so one of the things when we met with Bruce was that we found out that if our timing works out right, that we can purchase devices before the TRIG grant activity is finished, then we'd have the opportunity to take advantage of that incentive should we purchase our devices through the Copper County or through that program.
And there's no way to make that, applying for those, that grant money more flexible so that more districts can take advantage of it? I mean, maybe we have not understandings.
Well, we had over 90% of the districts apply to participate, so they were eligible last year. And we're expecting the same level of participation this year. The deadline is this Friday to participate. And then we're anticipating $7 million being available. It might be structured slightly different, but it still allow all the districts to participate. And so like Gary was suggesting, that perhaps his district would be able to take advantage of it. We will only have one window. It'll be in the late spring, early summer, and that's the purchasing timeframe. And then they will receive the incentive in August. And what's nice about the incentive is it's operating funds that can't be put back into general fund that must go towards improving the school's readiness, and that can include professional development. So in a case of gross point, they're going to be able to hire additional staff to support the rollout and provide additional professional development, provide in the building wireless and other things that maybe their bonding will not allow for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we had a motion in a second?
The two items on the consent agenda, that's not one of them, that's the one that's already done.
Oh, thank you anyway. She did even more.
But anyway, so we'll get to the consent agenda. No, it's fine.
Just to clarify, what we're voting on is just...
Yeah, well, thank you.
Two other ones.
So we have a motion in a second.
Just a test to see if anybody knows what's going on, and yes, they do. Thank you very much.
All in favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you very much. And I think that's it. Is that right? Merz, something here, a little bit of comments from board? Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to tell you a little story that I'm celeb... Can I stand up?
Absolutely.
That I'm celebrating today. Did everybody see my angel?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I posted this in my Facebook page, and this is what it says, okay? On December the 12th, 2003, I received this beautiful angel as a gift from Mrs. Muniz for my birthday, and I probably will cry because this is sad, for my birthday. I was teaching seventh grade at Westwood Middle School, and Mrs. Muniz was the grandmother assigned to my classroom. We were a tight pair for two very eventful years. Ten years ago, on December the 17th, 2003, which was five days after she gave me this angel, Mrs. Muniz lost her life in a house fire together with six other family members.
Oh, my gosh.
I will proudly celebrate her life by lighting the angel she so proudly presented to me 10 years ago in my classroom birthday party. May she rest in peace. So you see so many beautiful things happen in our schools, day after day. And this lady, and this grandmother's program came into our lives at Westwood Middle School. And 10 years later, I'm celebrating her life, and of course, I have the angel lit at my house today.
Oh.
Beautiful.
How beautiful.
Beautiful. Thanks for sharing that. It's a beautiful story. Nice tribute to her. Kathleen?
I just wanted to say, well, you said I was at the Network of Michigan Educators. It's really so inspiring to be there, those teachers, all of the educators are so, they're terrific.
Awesome.
All of them are great. And just to be with them and to hear their questions and to hear their comments and everything else. And Deb Ball spoke at the dinner, and she was very interesting. She didn't talk about the evaluation, she talked about teachers, importance of teachers and how they have to, they have to work to promote themselves as being professionals and be valuable. So it was, it was a very interesting experience, and I would encourage more of you to participate next year.
Thanks for representing us.
Thank you too.
Thank you.
It was awesome. It was truly awesome. And our superintendent, he was like a rock star after he finished his presentation. All these young people around him wanting to take pictures, they're, "Wait a minute, I'm over here." Because everybody was over there.
Well, that's because of the big arrow.
It was great. It was really terrific.
Very good.
Well, thank you.
I, I...
Oh, you can go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to bring up an event that I went to and a meeting I went to last Friday. There was Kids Speak, which was at the Capitol, and Richard was also there. And they had, and they were also Kids Speak a few months ago at Wayne State University and the Law School there. And these are kids that they worked, what is it, the Michigan Children?
Michigan's Children.
Michigan's Children. And Public Radio was also involved with it. And it's that State of Opportunity group that works with them too. I don't know if you've heard of them. But anyway, they were at the Capitol and they spoke about the concerns of kids, particularly those in foster care or in, you know...
Adjudicated youth.
Adjudicated youth, okay, or somehow in some sort of a group home of some, where they needed supports like that. And the stories were incredibly compelling. They were also very familiar to me. And they talked again about just the transience and the number of times these kids have moved and the trauma that kids go through and how that impacts them academically. And it impacts children behaviorally, as I think it would impact any human being who goes through some pretty horrible things at a very young age or... So that was very moving, and I think there's a lot to learn from those folks. I've also attended a meeting on behalf of a faculty member at Wayne State University, Angelique Day. And she kind of asked me, she asked me to attend this meeting on Friday afternoon and to speak, you know, because I was on the Board of Ed, so... But it was an informal meeting with people from the, let's see, Department of DHS, Human Services. There was also Community Mental Health. I'm trying to think who else was there. And there were some people here from MDE. I think Mike Radke couldn't make it, but he was, they were hoping he would make it. They've been in conversation with him. But it's a program that I think we should look at or consider because it focuses on middle school youth at very vulnerable ages. There's a lot of research to support this from people, including people at Wayne State University, Social Work and College of Education. They're really focusing on youth in middle school and that are in these types of situations and doing a lot of work around trauma and how to deal with children educationally in these schools. And they're looking at community, much like the Great Start stuff that we were talking about, it combines these different agencies together so that they're communicating and sharing information on these youth to make sure that they get all the services they need, to make sure the foster parents or whoever is the caretakers have the information they need and that a lot of things don't fall through the cracks. So I've been working on that. I think it's a really good program, and they're looking for funding and support to help pilot this. And I know that there's no money to be just thrown around, but I, if anyone has, you know, I'd like to have a conversation on this at some point and maybe have Angelique come in and speak to the board about what they're doing. And that's about it. So I think it's, I don't know where to take it from here, but I think it has a lot of promise and it's well researched and...
I see Merz putting on, whenever something comes up, we put it on a tentative list for board agenda thinking for the Board Agenda Committee, so we won't lose that and bring it up Thursday, as a matter of fact.
Okay.
Richard, did you have something?
Yes. I think we all got the invitation from NASB to apply for a study group or that sort of thing. And I was giving some thought to maybe volunteering for the rural, problems of rural education. But before I do that, I have to make sure that the board is willing to foot the bill because that's two trips to Arlington for the meetings and then to the National NASB Convention, which I think is in, is it in Tacoma, Washington or something like that? Or Portland, Oregon, something like that. So I don't know if that's in the budget already.
I'm trying to remember.
What's that policy again?
I have a policy.
Well, it's next year, so we gotta hold it.
My recommendation had been that we take the travel budget and just split it equally among all members of the board, and folks could use it as they saw around work that was tied to their board affiliation. And for folks who weren't going to, you could always approach a colleague who was not going to use up their budget and ask them for some portion of theirs if your expenses were going to exceed your allotment. That was my recommendation. I don't know that we...
I think we did formalize it.
I think we did that already.
And then, Carol, is this a new year then that we, after October 1?
The board policy is in place until they change it.
No, 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 I mean fiscally. In terms of money available, October 1 was a new year.
Oh, right, yeah.
I don't know how much money there is.
I think maybe in order to effectuate them, we would just need to know what, how much money we have for each of us as of October 1.
Your NASB, what you agreed upon is like your NASB meetings would come off the top and then it would be split? So you're asking about a NASB study group, right?
Yes.
That's in addition to.
I think the appointees for NASB was off the top. And then, but I do think if it was additional beyond that, it was the required meeting, and then additional above that would be... So the one's gonna be picked up off the top, right? As a rep, you're...
Yeah, I'm a delegate, but you know, I haven't signed up for a study group, and I would be grateful for Richard for doing that and being part of that study group in rural and for, because most of us are not rural. Yeah, yeah, I would be open to ceding my opportunity to go to him on this issue.
I mean, this is a board call, so we would just carry out whatever you want.
There's also something in January that we were all invited to, and I don't remember the details. It might be on Next Generation Science.
Yeah, Next Generation Science answer, yeah, it was.
And I think part of it is covered. I don't know if anybody's planning to go to that. I don't know. It might be helpful.
Why don't we get out to you? We'll get out to you now that I have the boss over here give me one of these. We'll get out to you.
Sure.
I know. So we'll get out to you what we think is the current allotment and if taken off the top what it is, and it may even fit within that without any further discussion. And if it doesn't, then I think it's maybe reaching out reply to all, kind of to reach out for Michelle's offer.
Their first meeting is like January 21st or something like that, so they're gonna wanna...
I think they're all at the same time.
Tomorrow. We could get it out tomorrow.
Okay.
Carolyn Merzel.
Oh, my son has been paid for the three trips I've taken, like, most recently.
Okay.
Paid for by...
Does that sound okay? And we'll send a copy of the approved policy with it. So because in fairness...
Roll with the policy. We had this conversation, roll with the policy.
Roll with the policy and we'll send the dollar amount. And then see if it fits, and if it doesn't fit, I think it's a matter of replying all and hey, reach out.
You can have John's money, not mine, John's.
Right. John's got his own thing. He can do that policy thing. Okay?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, you told me...
Happy holidays.
Oh, okay.
Thank you all for all the work that you do.
Good New Year.
Fantastic work. And I love you all for...
We love you too.
You too, Gary.
Beautiful story on the angel to end with, so thank you for that. Very sad, my gosh.
Seven members.
Yes.
John, did that, do you know what I said? Thanksgiving about the word processing program, is that working for you?
Is that you? Is that Dan making that sound? Is that you? Did you just like let him deep breath out?
I'll get it tomorrow.
I do that. It's like, wow, that was a big sigh. I don't even know that I'm doing it.
Yeah, I heard it. Okay.
It's gonna stay here. It's staying here.
No.
It's staying here.